Our regular meeting for Thursday, April 21st, 2022 will now come to order. The invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Barti.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, right now, Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus. Father, we ask your blessings on this meeting. Father, we just bless your holy name and give you all the honor, the praise, and the glory that you so richly deserve. And, Lord, we ask your blessings right now, on every decision, every vote that we take, Heavenly Father, that it would be ordained by you, and that everything we do tonight, we do it to magnify you. It's in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Barti. Just let everyone know to silence your cell phones, and if you want to speak on one of the items, please fill out a blue slip and bring it up in front to Jessica. Roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshar?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pott?
Here.
Mr. Barris?
Here.
Vice President Barti?
Here.
Mr. Brain?
Here.
Mr. Burley?
Here.
Mr. Guillory?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markentown?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Tremonti?
Here.
And President Steller?
Here.
Everyone's present.
Thank you. Item 1A, approve an application for a special event permit. Staff recommends one special event permit be approved.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 1A carries. Item 1B, adopt an ordinance approving the following rezone application, 564 Parish Road in Ward 1, to rezon the west 1.32 acres from multifamily residential to general commercial to allow commercial development, a strip center. I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Markentown. Is there any discussion? Yes, to approve with conditions. Have a motion by, I'm sorry, by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Markentown. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 1B carries. Item 1C?
Moved.
Second.
Adopt an ordinance approving the following rezone application at 722 Helen Lane in Ward 1, rezoned from light commercial and mixed residential to multifamily residential to allow residential development townhomes. Have a motion by Mr. Markentown, Mr. Richard, and a second by Mr. Markentown to approve...
With conditions.
With conditions? Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1C carries. 1D, 1C is approved.
Move to deny rezon.
Second.
Adopt an ordinance approving the following rezoning application at 3548 H Broussard Road in Ward 6, rezoned from agriculture to recreational vehicle park to allow a residential vehicle park with 51 spaces. I have a motion to deny by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Markentown. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, if we could ask for the applicant, if the applicant's present...
Do we have the applicant in the audience? No applicant? Okay, thank you. So the motion is to deny. So, where am I? 1D is denied. 1E?
Motion to deny.
Adopt an ordinance approving the following rezoning application at 1136 Dun Ferry Road in Ward 6, rezoned from agriculture to general commercial to allow commercial development of manufactured home sales and service. Is the applicant in the audience? Do we have an applicant in the audience for 1E? We do not. The motion is to deny. Have a motion by Mr. Markentown and a second by Mr. Abshar. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 1E is denied. 1F, adopt an ordinance rescinding ordinance number 7254, which ordered demolition of one manufactured home on the property located at 163 Packing House Road.
Been taken care of already.
Structure has been demolished. We do need a motion to remove it from the record. I have a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1F carries. Item 1G?
So moved.
Adopt a resolution accepting Steelwater Lake subdivision located off Lane Road in Ward 2. Have a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1G passes.
Move on 2A.
Item 2A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated March 24, 2022. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 2A carries. Item 2B, approve the budget committee report dated April 21st, 2022, Mr. Andre Pott.
Yes, Mr. President. The budget committee of the police jury met at 4:45 PM today, April 21st. The committee recommended approval of the following items from the Parish Gaming Fund. Item 1A, Ward 1, Water Districts Number 1 of Ward 1, $125,000 matching funds for costs associated with the Indian Bayou subdivision waterline project, Phase 2 of Pine Wood Road. 1B, Economic Development Southwest Louisiana Convention and Visitors Bureau, $8,286 sponsorship cost for the World LNG and Gas Series Summit in Lake Charles for November 2022. Item 1C, Economic Development City of Lake Charles, $1,500,000 for the construction of the Port Wonder Project. The committee also received a report from Mr. Beam regarding employee retention and staffing levels at the police jury. Mr. Beam explained that inflation nationwide has moved the cost in goods and services, in some cases, to more than triple what they were this time last year, and that these sustained cost increases have caused a dramatic negative effect on everyone's ability to pay their bills. One result is that the police jury employee retention has become a much significant challenge. Therefore, the police jury administration requested that the budget committee recommend to the full police jury the approval of a 4%, 4.0% mid-year salary structure shift to the police jury's pay plan effective May 1st, 2022. This would mean that all starting pay rates and steps in the compensation plan would be increased by 4% and that all existing police jury employees would receive the same 4% increase. Upon receiving the report, the committee recommended that the police jury's classification and compensation plan be adjusted upward by 4%. This concludes my report, and I move on behalf of the committee, Mr. President.
I have a motion to approve the budget committee report by Mr. Andre Pott and a second by Mr. Landry. Is there any discussion? Any objection? 2B carries. Item 2C, adopt a resolution approving the Calhoun Parish jury, police jury's strategic plan for 2022 to 2024 as presented by staff at the regular meeting on April 7th, 2022. Have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 2C carries. Item 2D, adopt a resolution calling a special election to be held in Calhoun Parish, Louisiana, on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022, for authority of the Calhoun Parish Police Jury to renew, levy, and collect an existing tax of 2.48 mils for one entire year for the purpose of maintaining and operating the facilities and services of the Calhoun Parish Health Unit.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Andre Pott. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 2D passes. 2E, adopt a resolution calling a special election to be held in Calhoun Parish, Louisiana, on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022, for the authority of the Calhoun Parish Police Jury to renew, levy, and collect an existing tax of 3.49 mils for the purpose of maintaining and operating the juvenile detention center and juvenile probation office. I have a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 2E carries.
Move on 2F.
Item 2F, adopt a resolution calling a special election to be held in Calhoun Parish, Louisiana, on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022, for authority of the Calhoun Parish Police Jury to renew, levy, and collect an existing tax, 4.06 mils, related to construction, hard surfacing, and improving roads, highways, and bridges, and the necessary ditching and drainage related thereto. I have a motion by Mr. Andre Pott and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 2F carries. Item 3A?
Move on 3A.
Adopt a resolution approving a federally funded public assistance state agreement for the Hurricane Ida disaster event. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 3A carries.
Move on item 4A.
Item 4A is approved payment of all current invoices and advised regarding comparisons on the general fund. I have a motion by Mr. Andre Pott and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 4A carries.
Move on 4B.
Item 4B, advertise for bids for the Calhoun Parish Police Jury Hurricane Demolition Project. I have a motion by Mr. Mark, excuse me, Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Markentown. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 4B carries. Item 4C? I'm sorry? Go ahead, Mr. Landry.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On 4B, it includes the old district attorney's office. Are you talking about this historic building right next to us that got destroyed by that remodel in the 1970s? Thought we were, last time we talked about that, y'all were going to see about if that thing couldn't be saved. It used to be an old Dodge dealership. Never heard anything else after that.
I can ask Mr. Kelly to come up also, but we looked into it, and we, there was a discussion about, if you couldn't save the entire building, which we don't think we can do, we could actually say pieces of the blue Dodge emblem or logo that it's kind of came to sight after the first layer of brick fell off. That is something we can still look at, if we could save some of the bricks, but we did determine shortly thereafter that the building does have to come down.
You know, I would ask that we hold off on that just a little longer and let's get some people involved, possibly from the outside, to really look at this and see if that's, could possibly be saved before we just tear it all down? Just an extra one last effort? The rest of them, I could care less about. There's nothing significant about any of those buildings, really. But that's a very old building, you know, that's part of what's wrong with this town. They've torn down all kinds of buildings down here years ago that shouldn't have been torn down. The Majestic Hotel, there's nothing wrong with it, could have been restored. And I'm not saying what you just told me is incorrect, maybe, I mean, maybe that's the final answer. I would just like to maybe go outside, ask some experts, have some other people look at it, and just, you know, hey, if the result's the same, you lost a month or two, and we end up tearing it down. No harm, no foul.
Mr. President, if I could, address Mr. Landry's request. This, y'all may decide the same thing. It's conceivable it could be salvaged. It's one of those, it depends, it is exceedingly expensive to try to do that, and depending on what you use it for. Obviously, it was revealed the previous use of it, but I suspect somebody that we might get could tell us, you can save the structure of this. It's just, it comes down to what, how much do you want to spend to make it restored? It's, when you say historic, I just want to clarify, it's not, I know you know this, but it's not a, it's not a declared historical building, like some of the others that, you know, like the old courthouse and all. But, obviously, I just want to throw that in. It's not, we're not saying it can't be done, it's a matter of economics, I think.
Mr. Landry, you have the floor.
But at that point, we make an informed decision. And right now, you can't even begin to give us even an estimate of maybe what that would cost. Hey, possibly you could sell the building. There's people in this town that have money and are interested in restoring buildings, that they, you know, maybe they turn it into some type of event center or what have you. It doesn't hurt to me to go through that process. You tear the rest of them down, I don't care. I would just say, let's just make sure we're doing the right thing. And believe me, before I knew what was under there, I wanted you to tear it down 20 years ago, and y'all never did. Now I changed my mind. You can't see, it's in the way, I mean, I get all of that, I just, I just think we should slow down just a bit and just make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Mr. Guillory?
Yes, I just want to say thank you, because I've called several times on this, and just for the people to know that we are doing the building adjacent to the Allen P. August Center on Mullen Street. I just want to say thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Andre Pott?
Approximately, how old is that building that Mr. Landry is referencing?
I can, I don't know the exact date, I know it's, I can get Mr. Kelly, he might know more than I about the building. Probably 100 years? No, no, it's probably more like mid-century, maybe 1950s.
You done? Mr. Barris?
Thank you, sir. I'm with Mr. Landry, you know, let's make sure we get this right, but how does, how does the location of that building with the sightline issues that it has, how does that fit long-term with all of the road closures and improvements?
It doesn't. It's horrible for that, to be honest with you.
That would be my only concern.
That plays into it, there's no question, it is a sightline challenge. I'm not, that's no opinion, y'all know this. It's the old wasty building, and it is, it is, that's a separate issue from whether it should be preserved, but it is not a good, in a good place for traffic control.
But where it sits, does it, is it, does it present any other obstacles to any of the things we have coming up, you know, long-term?
Well, the, I think the city of Lake Charles will have to answer some of that, and they may have more detail. I do know that the plan for this, if demolished, was to not do anything there, because frankly, it's, the space would be a much, in our opinion, attractive entry into downtown coming from the south to complement what we already did, you did with the demolishing of the other old DA building. It's, it actually is all in the same thought process, and we would dress it up to make it look nice, but not, we weren't even going to put parking there or anything, because people have asked that. It would just be a nice, open space in the design of what we think it should look like. But obviously, if y'all want to talk about it, you know, the building, we can.
I'm, like I said, I'm with Mr. Landry as far as, you know, in historic value. You know, if there's something, then obviously, like he said, it's only a couple of months, and then, you know, we'll have, we'll have our answer, but at least we gave it the old college trial. I yield back.
Mr. Gabb?
Mr. President, hearing Mr. Landry and Mr. Barris' concerns, there are two options you have. One would be to delay, to defer the item, or the second would be to move to amend the main motion to remove the old district attorney's office from the, from the action being taken.
Move to delay.
Well, the staff would recommend and has asked that we do a motion to amend and take out the old district attorney's office, they'd like to proceed with the other buildings.
Okay, so can you repeat the motion for me?
Sure. Motion to amend to delete, remove old district attorney's office from this project. That would be the motion to amend.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Barti to amend the motion. I need a second.
Mr. Barris?
Mr. Barris? Yes. The motion goes by Mr. Barris? And a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. We're going to move to 4C. Advertise for bids for the 3001 Industrial Avenue Hurricane Repair Project.
So moved.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Landry. Is there any discussion? Any objection? 4C carries. Item 4D, advertise for bids for the downtown elevator repair and replacement project. Have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Lewis. Excuse me, is there any other discussion? Any objections? I'm sorry, Mr. Burley.
Is this to repair or replace these elevators?
Kelly can come up, it's a bit of both. I didn't see him.
Just for the record, Dean?
Dean Kelly, Director of Facilities. Like Brian said, it's a bit of both, so... The project is going to effectively replace the elevators, however, we're not going to have to change out the cart, the car itself. So, it gets that type of a title. But, for all intents and purposes, all new motors, windings, everything is new, with the exception of the actual car that you travel in. That's all. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 4E passes. Item 4F, advertise for bids for one used or reconditioned twin-engine aircraft.
We do 4D.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Item 4E, advertise for bids for, I'm sorry?
We accept your apology.
Thank you. Advertise for bids for the Health Connection Generator and Improvements Project.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Markentown and a second by Mr. Richard. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 4E passes. Item 4F?
Move on air.
Advertise for bids for one used or reconditioned twin-engine aircraft. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Landry. I have a question, if I may. Why are we, why are we buying used aircraft engines?
That's a, that's a good question, Mrs. Stone, it's been brought up before. We feel very confident, and I guess you'd call the used airplane business, that due to the maintenance requirements and inspections on these planes, yearly, monthly inspections, that we can find a good used plane, which really is a common practice when you talk about buying planes for mosquito control. But we will have our pilots and our mechanic inspect whatever plane we purchase and end up...
Yeah, and I don't doubt that at all, I'm sure you will, but I'm just curious of why we would not buy...
A used King Air, which is what we're looking for, if we can get one of those, which we feel pretty confident we can, is going to be a great plane for mosquito control. It will match the other King Air that's currently in the hangar.
Okay, good. Good deal. Any other discussion? Any objection? 4F carries.
Move on 4G.
Item 4G, advertise for bids for two motorized sandbagging machines with haul trailers. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Markentown. I have a question after Mr. Landry.
Well, no, I'm just, me and Mr. Hayes are ready to adjourn, we were, I don't need anything.
No, we're not adjourned yet.
We'll pause that for a second.
This is my meeting, okay? Yeah, the motion is by Mr. Barris, I mean, Mr. Hayes, and a beck and by, Mr. Markentown. Okay. Explain exactly what these things are going to do for us.
You know, I'll do the old handoff, hand the football off to Mr. Wainwright, if I could, Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Wainwright, could you explain to us what exactly these things are going to do for us?
So...
For the, for the people of the parish, right?
Absolutely. Good opportunity to explain. So we are trying to, you know, just make it a little more efficient on them days when people need to get sandbags. You know, what these machines have, and we've kind of looked at a number of them, is they have a hopper where we will be able to load sand into the top, mostly using gravity feed, but there's a motorized, there's a, you know, you kind of shake it, and there's a conveyor-type setup, but, so through gravity feed, we'll be able to load four bags at a time. So it's not an automated process where there's still a lot of work to be done. It essentially takes the shovel out of the equation, so there's still a lot of work to be done. We are working through the details of how we're going to operate them. Once we have them in, we're going to test them, we're going to see how things can work, but we have two, we're going to start with that. We're going to have people at, if we have to use them or put them into use, we'll have employees there during the daylight hours, we're going to run these. And then what we'll do is, so that we don't have to be there all night, we will put back, when we leave at night, we'll basically put back regular piles, and you'll be able to continue to come. As y'all know, people come at all hours of the night when we are in that type of situation. So we'll also have all of our other sandbagging locations that we typically use up and running. And again, as we vet out these machines and honestly learn how to integrate them into our process, you know, maybe we'll get more, but for now, this is a good start, and it's just trying to make it a little more efficient on that day.
Okay, so basically, what's going to happen is there, we're going to be able to get rid of the shelf.
When these are in use, yes, but you'll still be loading your own bag, you'll still be doing everything the same. It's just, it'll be a gravity feed system, basically, that makes it a little easier.
Okay, good, thank you. Mr. Barris?
Thank you. So, okay, John Q. Public puts his bag on the, on the contraption, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then he ties his own bag, and he loads his bag?
Yes, so there's a, there's a...
We're out of the, what I'm saying is, we're out of the equation from a liability standpoint.
Well, I would say, anything goes wrong, we're always in the equation. Sam could probably answer that better than me, but, you know, again, these are proven systems, they have been in use, you know, we went out and looked through a number of them. Really, there's a pedal, essentially, that operates, that releases the sand. You fill your bag, you release the pedal, you put the next bag up there, so it's, you know, the word "motorized" there is probably a little misleading, it's mostly gravity feed systems that...
Right.
They're, you know, so worse you could probably do is pour a lot of sand out on the ground.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Tremonti?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wainwright, what do these things run, roughly?
I'm gonna, I, I'm thinking... You have bids, so... You have bids, so be careful.
Yeah, this is going to be a bid process, but they're, they're, they're several thousand dollars.
Okay. I guess what I'm, we have a pretty large parish. If we have two, and I'm thinking we have one in Lake Charles, say one in Sulphur, what about Vinton, Moss Plough, Westlake, Dequincy? I mean, should we be looking to get more than two?
Well, just, just, you know, I alluded to it a little bit, but, you know, I don't know that we are against ultimately expanding the fleet, if you would, once we realize how they work and how well it works and how, put them in service. And so we're not opposed to that. Just do, do remember, and it's, it's not that we, but it does take employees to be there stationed and everything, so it does take manpower to run these. So the more you proliferate them, the more that comes into play, and how you have to manage that during an event when, many times, this is pre-hurricane, right up through the last day, and obviously, your resources are being used and pulled in a lot of directions on those days. So those things we think about, but we're not opposed to it at this point. We just would prefer to ease into it, I guess.
I got you. Just checking. Thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Well, you, you almost asked my question, Mr. Tremonti, and that was, you're getting two, I assume, be on one side of the river and the other on the other side of the river. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, and we have basically, traditionally, we have two main sites where most of the activity happens. Certainly, people use all the other sites. They're full-time adventure when we're having to do that, but I think this is a good start. You know, again, at this point, once we can get some experience with the equipment and use it ourselves, see how the demand is, we'll, we'll be back if that's a good idea.
Mr., you done, sir?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Underpoint?
I just want to say, I think this is a step in the right direction. You know, you see many people out there with shovels and eliminating that, and I'm anxious to see how it works, but I think there's definite, definitely a need, so I'm glad to see us moving in that direction.
Thank you. Mr. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just referring to Mr. Barris's, they're going to have to bring their own bags, or we're going to still furnish the bags?
Oh, no, sir. No, sir. Nothing else is going to change. We supply the bags and the sand. Again, this is just a way, hopefully, to just be more efficient at loading the bag.
And it'll be the same size bags that we've been using in the past.
Yes, sir. Everything's going to be the same, to my knowledge. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Markentown. Is there?
Move to adjourn number five.
Move to adjourn.